Shall we entertain a motion to come out of closed session?
I might get a motion.
A motion to have a second?
A second.
Start the voting, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's certification of the board supervisors convene a closed session in this state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and not hold the motion to close the meeting in accordance with Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas Section 2.2-3711D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the board supervisors that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. We went under A1 and A6. Now therefore being resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed session to which the certification applies. And all such business matters as were identified in the motion of which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies. I ask you all to certify, starting with Mr. Moore?
I so certify.
Mr. Early?
I so certify.
Mr. Collins?
I so certify.
Mr. Bryant?
I so certify.
Mr. Horton?
I so certify.
And I so certify. Okay, I'll ask Mr. Bryant if he'll leave us an indication and pledge, please. Our heavenly Father, we're thankful that we can be here tonight to help make decisions for the county. We just ask that you guide us in every way and, Lord, we just thank you for everything. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is business recognition. I'll ask Mr. Horton if he wants to present the recognition to Burt's Garage.
Scott, you mind coming on up? Scott, just want to give you a little certificate here. Appreciate all you do for our county. Learned today that Burt's Garage actually started in 1975. I didn't realize it had actually been in Carroll County that long. Me and Scott was kind of talking and he's owned it since 2020, uh, 22? 2002, 2002 is when he actually bought it. But we appreciate everything you do for our county and just want to recognize you in front of everybody and give you a certificate.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Can we get a picture? Yeah.
Pick, 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 pick.
Picture.
She's gonna take your picture right here. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is the recreation update. Kurt, if you'll come up, please.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. So what I've done here is I've comprised a packet here for all of you. I've collected a lot of data pertaining to the pool project over at Recreation Park. The data that I have in here, a lot of it's from With County as well as the city of Roanoke. There are some price points in here, about a couple of different options, about possibilities of a pool over at the park in the previous location as to where the park or where the pool was over at the park. I've worked with National Pools in developing as well as Thompson Litten, which are engineers over at the park, to develop a pool or an idea of a pool, something that mimics a lot of what they have over at the city of Roanoke. It is a pool that not necessarily is the traditional sense, but something that has a zero entry, something that has some features, provides some lap lane swimming, a lot of things for some kids, a lot of things for older adults, older folks, those kinds of things. We'll talk about the price points here in just a minute, but wanted you guys to take a look at, you know, once we get past the engineering plans, if you look at the schematic here, you can kind of see on, before we get to the actual picture, but you can kind of see where the zero entry component is. There is a, there are three lap lanes. There is a lazy river comprising this as well, as well as bathrooms, locker rooms, pump room, mechanical room. This pool, this, this layout for this pool, 4,400 square feet on this pool and would have a total footprint of nearly between 7,000 and 9,000 square feet. The platform that we have over there right now, where the old pool was at one point, is about 14,000 square feet. The previous pool over there, I talked to Larry Collins a little bit today about that. The previous pool that we had over there was 133,000 gallons. I think it had a six-hour turnover rate, doing about 350 gallons per minute filter. The pool house over there was about 2,400 square feet. What I have provided you with here, something a little bit smaller, so I have something at 4,400 square feet on the pool. The total volume, there's 150,000 gallons in the previous one, 90,000 gallons in this pool. And then if you flip to the next page, you can kind of see what the pool would look like, relative idea about what the pool would look like. Just gives a little bit more of a visual rather than just the overhead picture. One thing that they have included in this is a, is a very, very large slide. That was a separate cost. National pools right now are the general contractors on this project. We've talked to them a little bit about their, I think they've started construction on this project as of June. Their plans as far as when they would be able to start, we've talked to them a little bit about a potential start date if they did. Timeframe for them would be next spring with a possible, possibility of finishing it in spring of 2026. Next, you'll be able to see some of the operational costs for the city of Roanoke. Obviously, they have a couple of different pools, but just wanted you all to be able to see a little bit about what it's costing them to operate yearly. And this is again for the city of Roanoke. I'll get to the, to With County here in just a minute. So if we move on to the next page, this is just an overhead aerial picture of the spot right now where the pool was at one point. Kind of the shaded area that you see there is where the pool house was, and then the pool actually sat in kind of a L shape just to the right of that. We actually were able to take that picture a few weeks ago when we were going through a little bit of a drought so that grass kind of gave it a little bit of an outline. All right, so the next, the next page that you're seeing here is the pool in With County. So they built this back in the late 90s. Now, this pool, 133,000 gallons, 5,248 square feet, turnover rate pumping 375 gallons per minute.
Hey Kurt, which page are you on?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, one after this.
I was one page off.
This is a little bit more of the traditional sense pool rather than the one previous that I'd shown you. So then the next couple of pages that you'll see are the operational costs, starting in last year and moving backwards towards 2021, I believe. Just wanted you to be able to see some of the operational costs as far as maintenance and repairs, ordering supplies, heating, electrical, deployments. There's a few pages there, but I wanted you to be able to see all of those. All right, now if we come back to the front, what I have proposed here are two different options. We have an option where the pool, the pool would stay the same, but the thought behind, they have an 1,800 square foot clubhouse that would house the concessions, it would house the bathrooms, locker rooms, all those, all those kinds of things. Total estimated project cost on that, $4,047,000. And then you can kind of see how the layout of how that would sit. The second proposed option that I wanted to bring to your attention was we, so we have our office over there at the rec park. It's been there since early 80s. I asked and talked to the engineer about the possibility of demoing that building and looking into building back a new building that would serve as the recreation office and as the new, or the new recreation office and as the pool house. So it would serve two purposes, and this one's at 3,600 square feet. We've had a lot of folks in the community asking about the pool. They have strong desires to have a pool. Splash pad is obviously a hit and I think they want to see it. I can go into some estimated budget increases too, if you'd like me to touch on those as well. Just some, they're just some relative, relative numbers. Okay. So we have annual heating costs range anywhere between $7,000 and $9,000 per year. Annual electrical, anywhere between 10,000 and $15,000. Chemicals, 15,000. Maintenance and repairs, I aim that just a little bit high, just on some previous experiences that I've had with pool operations. 25,000 to 30,000 dollars per year. Part-time employment, 30,000 to 45,000 dollars per year. And full-time, if we were to have a full-time operator there, between 35,000 and 50,000 dollars per year. Looking at total revenue increase between 120,000 and 170,000 dollars, I'm sorry, total increase on the budget between 120,000 and 170,000 dollars. Revenues, relative numbers, I ballparked it at about five, if we, if we were to do it at $5 per person and we were to see roughly about 125 people per day for 16 weeks, seven days a week, we would have anywhere between 65,000 and 70,000 dollars in revenue. That's not including like if we were to do things like pool parties or other kind of...
You talking about being open how many weeks?
16 weeks.
16 weeks, seven days a week.
So I talked a lot with the, the Parson Recreation Director for With County too, and he provided me with a lot of insight simply because he's had a lot of experience with the pool kind of from his start to where he is now. Couple of things that he wanted to touch on that he talked about was investing into a pool cover. So something that sits over top of that pool during, you know, the off-season months. And a lot of that has to do with keeping, keeping the chemicals in, in order, but also keeping out like geese and animals and those kinds of things. It ranges anywhere between 10,000 and 20,000 dollars for a cover. Now it's on the higher end. You can find things obviously a little bit less, but just wanted to touch on that as well. He also stated that they resurfaced their pool. They do this about once every 20 years and the cost on that was approximately 80,000 dollars to resurface the pool. He said that also too, that the resurfacing on, was it, I would say be more, a little bit more for them because they said it cost around 20,000 dollars more simply because somebody had painted the inside walls of their pool. See what else? That's pretty much, that's all I have left. What questions do you all have for me?
This first estimate is from the engineer, not the contractor, correct?
That is correct.
And it's got a built-in contingency DC as well?
Yes. That is correct.
Do you have the one from National Pools?
I do.
What did it come in at?
3.2 million.
3.2 million?
Yes. One thing I would like to also touch on, I forgot to touch on at the very back, in the very back of your packet, there is a schematic for a pool house that was done in Pulaski County. That actually just came back today. This is 7,800 square feet with 3,800 square feet of occupiable space. The price that came back on that was 2,050,000 on that. Now, this is a brick and mortar building, not a metal shed building. But what, reason I included this in the packet was to simply show you the thought or the idea behind what I was thinking with having a double-purposed building or a dual purpose building. This is not to say what we need, but just to show the idea. And Mr. Dixon, the reason for the 3.2, $250,000 of that is a water slide.
Wow. Do you want else to have any questions?
It would be.
Kurt, when you talked about the, the amount of money that you would take in on average, you, you mentioned the swimmers that come. What about the snack bar and stuff of that nature? I assume that factored in?
I did not include that.
You didn't?
I haven't included that, no.
This is just entry fee basically to them?
Correct, yeah. And that's, that's just a rough, that's just a rough idea.
And you based it on $5 a person?
Yes. And the reason I went with that number, I called around and the average ranged anywhere between $8, Roanoke's a little bit higher, anywhere between $8 and about 3. So I just kind of ballparked it in that area. And then kids at a certain age are obviously free. So this was the number that I, that I chose. Obviously it could be a little bit more, it could be a little bit less. Concessions, I don't know what that figure, I was thinking if you can get that figure about, you know, total volume of what we could possibly see. And then I think that a little bit of that is depending on what type of concessions we're doing.
Right. Is this, is this the drawing you said is what With County has now or is that...
No, that is the project in the city of Roanoke.
Okay.
The Washington Park. And the schematic is before, the blueprints are that one, that of before. The, the one in With County is this one.
Oh, okay, okay.
And that is for the county, not the town.
And you said even with the lap pool, it's less gallons than what we had before when the county had a pool? Does that mean the main part of the swimming area is that much smaller? Because it didn't have a lap pool before, did it?
It did have three lap lanes.
Did it have?
I actually have, I actually have the blueprints to it.
It's been a long time, I can't remember. Okay.
No, it did, it did have lap lanes and then it had a, it was kind of a, like I said, an L shape.
Yeah, I do remember that, yeah.
It had a deep, deep end with two diving boards.
Okay, yeah, I do remember that.
Could some of the capacity in the water be based on a zero entry?
Yes.
So this one has, from my understanding, it has a zero entry. So instead of, like if you own a pool now, you're required to have a handicap assisted way of, for swimming with this, you'd have a zero entrance. So it would actually go from zero into the, the deeper area.
Right.
So it might be a way of making up some of the, I guess, square footage would be a better way to understand how many, instead of gallons.
And a couple of other things not included in here, decking, you know, decking, decking furniture and those kinds of things. We had also talked about the idea of some shelters around the pool or inside of the pool. I say, I say inside, come up on the bathroom area to include those like around the, right around the outer perimeter for parties and, you know, those kinds of things. People are going to want to have a place to go. Those are, those are a hot ticket over at the park, especially with the splash pad right now.
And so what's the capacity of people?
Inside the pool?
Yeah.
163 or 167.
I have a question. What's the max depth on this pool?
I believe it was 10 feet.
10 feet. Is there going to be a provision for a diving board or anything like that? I didn't see it in here, no diving board. I think the slide goes into the deep, if you do that right.
Do what?
The slide goes to the deep part, correct?
It would. One of the things that's a little bit different from the picture you see here and the other schematic is that the slide actually has its own, like where you would enter into the water actually has its own separate area rather than going directly into the lap lane area, which I think is a good feature to kind of have it off to the side a little bit rather than going directly in, into the water, the lap lanes. I think additionally also adding another lap lane would be beneficial. I think three is a little small, but that's...
Any more questions? No more.
Okay.
Thank you, Kurt.
Appreciate you.
All right, next on agenda is Gerald Goad.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for allowing me to come speak. This is something I've done since I've been in office is give the board an update. I feel like each and every one of you have, it is my responsibility to inform you of what's going on in, in our office. And just want to take this time and thank each and every one of you for your diligent service and it's an honor to continue serving for this county. So thank you for your time. I just have some very quick slides of, if we can look, we lost one screen, I believe, so.
Okay.
Just want to remind everyone that is that Circuit Corps, General District, and Juvenile, we generate on average 1.3, 1.5 million dollars for the county through, through court fines, costs, recordation fees, et cetera. This is our monthly breakdown of 2023 and what we generated as far as revenue for the county. As you can see, some, some months are sort of lower than others, but this is sort of your average 1.3, 1.5 million dollars that the court wing provides for the county, so. This is our case statistics that we report to the compensation board every year. Just kind of want to give you a sort of an idea of our workload every year. We average somewhere around 1,300 cases a year, which the last two years has been 1,400 criminal cases. Civil is, is going up a little bit. You know, it just kind of varies with the reasons for that. Wheels and Estates, I do want to let you know that, you know, as you are fully aware, you know, we do have an agent county. And so with that, I see our wheels and estate numbers keep going up. I think that we're even higher at this point this year than we were last year at this time. And so that's just something to kind of keep in mind as, as government leaders that, you know, we do have an agent county. Judgments, of course, they actually went down, which is a good thing. Deeds recorded, we average around 4,000 deeds a year. As you can see, you know, it's kind of went down a little bit. As you can see, you know, it's kind of went down a little bit. You know, you know, the interest rates and those types of things can have an effect, you know, as well as other things. But we average around four thousand deed recordings a year. Financial statements, marriage licenses went up just a little bit. You know, notary qualified, you know, and then concealed income permits, you know, we definitely went up last year compared to the year before. We definitely average around eleven hundred a year for concealed income permits. Restitution payments are very, very good. That means that defendants are actually paying their fines and costs and victims of crime are actually getting paid. So we definitely had a jump in restitution in the last year. And then, of course, passports issued has been up, you know, things are getting kind of back to normal. And so people want to travel, those types of things. The last year's accomplishments, you may have seen on the news. But last year at the time, I actually had Channel Ten News here in this actual room. We talked about our online concealed income permit application. Folks can actually go on our county's website. They can actually apply for their concealed income permit as well as their renewal, upload all their certificate, their driver's license information, as well as their payment, and it goes straight to our office. They don't have to visit the courthouse at all. This is made possible through what's called the Perimedium software. And so we actually, surprisingly though, we don't really see that much yet. I don't know if people may not, may or may not be aware of it, or people just simply like to come in and and see our office. I don't know. But it, but the option is definitely there for folks. And it seems to be working really well. We have, to me, this is a big accomplishment. We do have HDMI council table ports for the courtroom now. We actually have two large display screens, just like you see right here. We used to have a HDMI or an ethernet converter boxes. And so we enhanced from that into HDMI ports where folks can actually plug in their laptop and it goes straight to their, to the screens during a, during a trial. Another thing, too, that's a very, very big accomplishment. This was a vision that I had eight years ago, and it definitely came to fruition last year as we completely completed our archives room renovation down in the archives room. I appreciate Mr. Watson being there during our unveiling. And as well as all the others for your support, this definitely took a team effort. As I mentioned last year, just to remind you, this, there was a lot of capital improvement funds from the county and from you all to help make this happen. If you haven't seen the archives room, I definitely welcome you to see that. It's, we have a, and it's really interesting, too. We actually have Mount Rogers IDC folks that come in on Wednesdays. And they actually help us scan our documents. We actually, of course, have high school and interns and those things, as well as our volunteers. And I'm sure you, everybody knows Delilah, Ms. Brady, and Stephen Turner, and some of those with the Historical Society and Genealogy Club still continue to to come down to the archives room. But we, we just really appreciate your all support through that over the years. But it's finally completed now. Library of Virginia Grant Awards, I'll go in that in a minute, but we, we got a grant award that we're now up to a little under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I've brought in since I've been clerk for document preservation. Chris Stone, our deputy clerk, received his Master Deputy Clerk certification last year. And then we also completed marriage license back scan. We have all of our marriage license indexing information online. Some of you have SRA, Secure Remote Access. You can actually pull up everything from the beginning of the county in terms of marriage license. But now we're actually having to attach the images that have been back scanned to those. And that's a work in progress right now. And we actually do more electronic recordings than ever before now. You know, through our simple file, folks can actually submit a deed and record it electronically. We do a lot of things electronically now, which helps with foot traffic and also enhances customer service and those types of things. Of course, this is a picture of our ribbing cutting last year. This picture was on the front of the Carroll News. You may see a familiar gentleman on the right. It's Mr. Watson there. Appreciate his support there. Hope that was okay to share. But, but no, we, we, this was a big accomplishment for, for us and for the county, I feel like. People have been very amazed with the work involved. And so I'm just very blessed that we were able to get this accomplished. Just as a reminder, Carroll County Circuit Court has all the latest technology that you can possibly get for a circuit court clerk's office. Those, I've shared this with you before, but, you know, we have, of course, case imaging system. The officer of the court remote access is for attorneys that can access case files electronically without having to visit the clerk's office. This is also a subscription fee, which also generates revenue for the office and to where it, it, you know, we're not having to rely on our local budgets for things. Of course, covers is our online deed access. BJOBS is a way for defendants to pay for their fines online. The judiciary filing system is for attorneys that can file their civil cases electronically. Of course, a video docket system is the big screen outside of the courtroom lobby, kind of looks like you're at an airport. Believe it or not, whenever I first became clerk, the only thing that people had to go by it is whether or not they were going to be in court today was a paper docket. And they passed it around the lobby. And I thought this was ridiculous. And so we actually invested in a video docket system. So you can actually see from a daily, on day on day basis, what's going to be scheduled on, on the day's docket in the courtroom. There's a video arraignment system, of course, I've talked to you about before. This, you know, we arrange defendants now through what's called Polycom. We actually have folks that can participate in our court proceedings through video. We actually had a gentleman from, I believe it was Austria, last year testify. And so, you know, and then you also, with Polycom, you can actually participate in court hearings from your cell phone. We haven't, we don't do that much anymore since COVID has gone. But that did actually happen in twenty twenty. We do have a marriage license kiosk that folks can actually come in and use a computer to fill out their marriage license applications. Virginia jury management system is a computerized system for jury services. And of course, I mentioned to you before about the online concealed income permit applications. My twenty twenty-four goals is, of course, webpage additions and enhancements. I'm actually, I've got all us and the other two courts, thanks to Mount Rogers here, that we're actually going to be scheduling a mental health first aid workshop for our employees of the court system. What this is, this is something that the, that I participated in myself at Withville Community, when I was employed at Withville Community College, this is for folks to work with anyone that may, may have a mental illness that's coming in and having to receive public services. It's a way for us to be more aware of maybe certain you know, interactions with the general public. And it's, it's more of a, you know, more of a professional development type thing for not only our office, but also for the two other courts. So we're excited about that. That's actually coming up this month. I try to do seminars for wheels and estate planning. I've been doing that for the past few years. There's here upcoming, I'll be speaking at Doug'sburg Community Center. And then also the Twin County Chamber of Commerce has actually been interested in doing a wheels and estate workshop with my office, Von Gwynn and Von Gwynn McGrady, and then also with Edward Jones. So we're really excited to hopefully have, offer that. I also wanted to remind you that August is, I'm not sure if you came up with this, but anyways, what, August is National Make a Wheel Month. I know that's something that none of us like to think about, but, you know, making a wheel and caring for your loved ones is very important. None of us are guaranteed the next day. Of course, we have continuous work on archives and preservation. And I want to talk to you a little bit about the last one is that I've been, me as well as Brooke Love, or we have been accepted and participating in the Virginia Rural Leadership Institute. This is from the Virginia Rural Center. And one of the requirements in this program is that we have to create a community impact project. And one of the things that I thought would, that, you know, I could contribute to, and I feel like it's a very significant need in this county, is to work on and taking on the, a preservation and work at the historic courthouse. I think our historic courthouse is, is a vital piece to our county. It's on our county seal. You know, I, you know, I've participated in the, in the play this past year. But I think, you know, not to go into more detail, but basically, this is going to be, we're going to be bringing back the courthouse preservation committee. With this program, I'm able to network with a lot of state key holders in terms of funding and grant funding. And that's going to be my biggest project for this next term, in the next seven years, is to really enhance our historic courthouse. So. Just want to remind you of the grant awards. This last grant, award that I received was fifteen thousand dollars for in twenty-two, which now, since, since I've been in the last eight years, I've, I've received, or our office has received, rather, a little under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for grant preservation. I just want to remind you of the community appointments and community involvement. I'm on the Mount Rogers Community Services Board. When I sit down, I don't know if they, they may want to tell you exactly how they feel about me. I don't know. But anyways, I'm very honored to serve on that board. I'm also a member of the Twin County Chamber of Commerce, Hills Road Rotary. I serve on the Education Committee for the Virginia Court Clerks Association. And then also I've been appointed by the Virginia Supreme Court to work on the Virginia Associate, or Virginia interdisciplinary guardianship stakeholders. This is for enhancement of guardian conservatorship services statewide. And then, of course, I'm also a member of the Carroll County Leader Task Force and the Virginia Rural Leadership Institute. And I think I've already talked to you a little bit about the Virginia Rural Leadership Institute. But you can also, you can search online. There's four sessions. This might be something that you would be interested in, in participating in in the future. It's a, it's, I'm, I'm the only clerk of court, but the, but most people are tourism directors, economic development directors of many localities across the state that represent rural areas. So it might be, I definitely recommend a great, it's a great program. I'm very honored and blessed to represent Carroll County in that. And last thing I wanted to share with you, I actually got this, this was forwarded to me last night. This is a, you know, of course, you know, while we have to take positive feedback when we can get it, but I received this email that was sent to one of my staff members. And, you know, of course, it was forwarded to me, and I wanted to share this with you. It says, "I hope this letter finds you well. I received the final approval from Donna today. You have both been exceptionally helpful and competent. I'm writing to extend my heartfelt thanks for your diligent and dedicated work and management. My Aunt Lila's conservatorship account. Your commitment to your duties has provided our family with tremendous peace of mind, knowing that their interests are being safeguarded with their utmost care and integrity. The work you do is truly vital. By ensuring that people with disabilities are protected from exploitation, you play an essential role in maintaining justice and fairness in our community. Your efforts make a significant difference in the lives of those who are vulnerable, and for that, we are deeply grateful. Thank you once again for your exceptional service and dedication. Your hard work does not go unnoticed and is greatly appreciated by all those that you serve." And I thought that was a very cool email that I got first thing this morning. And at the end, I just want to say thank you. And if there's anything that you, you ever need, my door is always open. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald.
Gerald, I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, first of all, for all you do. I think a lot of it goes unnoticed, but it's very important.
Thank you.
I certainly appreciate it. And I think generations to come will be thankful that you've dedicated your time to, to make records available to people.
Thank you.
I had a very prominent person within the county make a suggestion. I actually thought he was joking when he said it. He's in the legal profession. I'm not going to name him.
Okay.
He had a suggestion that we move the circuit court back to the historic courthouse.
That is, well, we'll see how far we, you know, get with preserving the historic courthouse. But I mean, you know, anything's possible.
Have you heard that before?
That is something that actually the judge, Judge Geezer has actually wanted himself. And we actually had, had in deep thoughts and talks about that last, or actually just last week. You know, his mother was very involved in the courthouse preservation.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, you know, there's, you know, I'm not saying anything's possible. That, that'd be something that would be beyond my, you know, my decision. But, but no, that's, you know, it's, like I said, it's a very beautiful piece of history. And I think there's a lot of work to be done there. The biggest thing for me for that building is, is to, you know, we're required by statute to have a continuation of operations plan. If, just in case something happens to this building, we have to continue with core operations. And I want to make sure that that is facility that we need to go to. Not many people, or not many localities, rather, you have an actual, you know, backup of an actual courthouse they have to go to. I know when Pulaski had a fire, they had to go to a warehouse or something. And this is something I really, I think we, we should all be very fortunate to still have our historic courthouse.
Do you think it's worth looking into?
I do. Mm-hmm. I do. That's just my personal opinion. But again, that's something that, that's beyond my, you know, I'm just, I'm just a clerk. But I do think that, you know, if it would be in of the best interest of, of the county, I would definitely be for it. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald. Appreciate it, Gerald.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Mount Rogers Performance Contract.
Hi, I'm Katie Ryan. We love Gerald. He's great support.
Thank you.
I'm the CEO of Mount Rogers, and just three of us are going to talk to you very briefly tonight. We need a performance contract approval from you guys. But
Thank you.
Mount Rogers is serving more and more individuals at our budget. For this fiscal year, it's ninety-six thousand dollars. We're trying very hard to serve everyone, but I wanted to go over some statistics with you very quickly. Eighteen million, we estimate, is the total economic impact of Carroll County. We have nine hundred sixty-eight budgeted positions. Of those, a hundred and twenty-six have addresses in Carroll County. They live in Carroll County. We served six point three percent of your citizens last year, at least once in our agency. And if you turn the page, last year, as you can see, our numbers continued to grow. We served a total of nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five individuals, unique individuals in fiscal year twenty-four. It says twenty-three, twenty-four, but it's actually year twenty-four. One thousand eight hundred and four of those had Carroll County address. We handed out a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, almost a hundred and sixty-eight thousand harm reduction items across our six jurisdictions and provide two hundred and thirty-five rethought trainings. Substance use, as you know, is issue in the, in southwest Virginia, and we are increasing our services there. And we are very committed to serving all individuals who walk through our doors. We see them quickly. They, they have access to psychiatric services, a full scale continuing care of mental health, substance use services. And we thank you very much for what you contributed to our budget last year, too. Patty's going to talk about the performance contract that we need to vote for. Then Richie's going to talk very quickly about our employment services here in Carroll County.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Ma'am, I have one. Could you tell me a little bit about your funding? Where do the sources of money come from?
Yeah. Forty-four percent of our money comes from Medicaid. Another thirty percent comes from state funding. And you're talking about what you need to vote on today. Less than one percent is local funding. Twelve percent is contractional.
And what localities provide that one percent?
Um, well, we provide one for, less than one percent, but we greatly appreciate it.
What about other localities?
Some localities, we have one of those, and then we have others that give us more.
What, what are the localities? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have Carroll County, the city of Baylax. And the city of Baylax has given us more this year. Carroll County gave us more this year. With Grayson. And with counties, we did not.
Grayson and With did not.
Smith County gave us more this year. And so.
Is that something, is that the first year that Grayson and With did not contribute? They have a reason?
Grayson's been hitting the border. With counties unhappy with it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
I appreciate you, honestly.
Thank you.
And it's not really about that.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting us come and speak to you tonight. So I just want to explain the performance contract a little bit. The performance contract that we are required to have is with our oversight agency, which is Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. And that contract is on a biennial contract. Last year was the big contract, which looks like this. You should have got a copy of it last year. I'm sure everybody read every bit of it. But this year, it is the second year, and there's only like eight pages. And so the first, I'm going to reference to page two, which is section fourteen. If you look on your handout that you have in your packet, it talks about, most of these things are things that's between us and the DTHDS. There are things that, that we're required to do and that they prepare, that they're required to do for us.
I'm sorry, excuse me. You, it wasn't in your packet? There was an email sent out late this evening with it in there?
Yep.
Um, there was, we didn't really receive it until this evening. We normally get it through the, through the mail with a return receipt. We can't track it down from either side, so if you have your email available, you'll have to read, do it through that, because we didn't print them for the meeting tonight.
We, we did send that out, because we had localities that actually sent us a little green slip back, but I don't, the mailman has yours somewhere, as I was saying. But like I said, the performance contract this year is just amendments to that original contract from last year. It, it added some specific conditions that we would have to comply with. It added, it changed maybe some language that was in that original performance contract. It told Mount Rogers what maybe the changes to our required data was. But all of these things that's in this amendment for this year has to do with us at DTHDS. But the one thing that I will say that, how it affects each one of our localities, is in section fourteen in item A, it requires us to have our performance contract approved or renewed by the governing body of each city or county that established it. And, and has to, and we have to have that done and have our performance contract signed to them by September thirtieth. So that's the only piece in any of these amendments that actually affects the county here, is just that one piece. And so that's what we're here tonight, seeking approval of the amendments so that we can sign our contract and have it in by September thirtieth.
Is that something that we could vote on in the September meeting and be ample enough time and have us time to review it and our lawyer to look at it?
Uh, when is your meeting?
September the...
Third, I believe.
Third.
It's good.
Okay. Will that be Labor Day Monday? So it would be Tuesday. It will be Tuesday. Not that we don't take your word, but you know, it'd be hard for me to vote on something that I haven't.
Absolutely.
So.
Well, since you haven't had it and you haven't seen it, I don't guess you really have any questions, so I guess we'll, I guess we'll look at this in September then.
I do have a question, right here. With County and Grayson County, since they're not funding you, are they also going to have to approve this?
Yes, they do.
Even without participating? Okay.
So it will be going before their board, also asking for approval for it. Well, we would like to, we, we would like for them to participate. Like I said, we really want the support of all of our localities that we, that we provide services for. Like I said, the, as Sandy told you, Grayson County and With County has decided not to participate this year, so I don't know what the ramifications of that area is, to be honest.
May I ask a question? And it might be a question for Sandy while we're, we're discussing this. The services that, that are provided, many of these services are required by a county to provide. Am I correct? So, um, right now, just to, for the board to understand, there's not a mandate, state mandated ten percent of funding, okay? But the state would like to see ten percent of funding come in, and, and it's done through the accounting process and those type things. You know, I'm going to give you my two cents, I think it's a bargain for the amount of funds that we give that they provide these services for us.
Just having a hundred and twenty-six employees.
Just having a hundred and twenty, that's, that's a thousand dollar an employee that we're getting a job in Carroll County for a thousand bucks, so not counting all the extra services you get. So I think it's true value for what we do. We couldn't do it for the same amount.
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I apologize, I didn't really know that I was going to share anything. But that's okay. I love talking about our IDCs, our Employment Support Services, which we're known now. We have three facilities, one in Atkins, Virginia, one in Withfield, Virginia, and one in Twin County here at the Interstate and Industrial Park. We're serving around a hundred and sixty-five individuals with various types of disabilities in the manufacturing realm. We're very proud of what we do. We are doing a combat shirt for the warfighter. At the town, we shipped around seventy-eight hundred of those shirts last month. We did five thousand helmet covers for the warfighter that we shipped out of this Twin County facility. We do the left sleeve on the combat shirt in this facility. We shipped five hundred and eighty field packs for the forestry service out of this Twin County facility. I'm very proud of our individuals. I'm very proud of what we do. Our individuals are very proud of what they do. We one hundred percent support these individuals, and they do a great job. I want to share a few brochures with you that just shows what we can do. We also have a screen printing operation here in our Twin County facility. If anyone ever needs any screen printing, I like to sell ourselves a little bit.
Didn't y'all do the one at Withfield Hockey? Didn't y'all have them?
Yes, we recently picked up the hockey team, uh, screen printing, which is new to the Bobcats. We do a lot of work for our local schools in Carroll County, and fire departments and folks like that. But, uh, it's a tremendous amount of work that goes into what we do. And you would be amazed to see these individuals and what they can do. I offer for each one of you, come and visit. You've had my number personally. We'll take you on a tour and we'll show you what these individuals do. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Since with's put them back on the agenda for next month. All right, next up is citizens' time. We allow three minutes yet, so starting with Janice Crox.
Thank you very much. I didn't really plan on speaking tonight. I'm sorry Ms. Farmer's not here, but I'm here to represent the litter task force, and I wanted to say thank you all for your support. We feel the support of our board, and we greatly appreciate that, because this is, this is all new to me, but it's something that is so needed in our county. So we just, we just got to clean up this stuff, and we're working very hard on these things. Sharon, I had one question for you. I know we had a presentation here from the waste tech industry. Have you all made any decisions on that, or where are we now with that plan?
Just having discussions.
Just having discussed it. Okay.
Discussion.
Just having discussions. Just having a discussion, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I, I think the litter task force is very much in favor of that program. If we can, if we can get that going, and I see such a need for it. We, we're working also with VDOT on trying to get some new signs out for, we don't hardly have any litter signs out on the highway anymore. I see just maybe one once in a while. I don't know what's happened, but I think VDOT's dropped the ball a little bit on that. But we're, we're trying to work on a lot of different levels with this. We're, we're out, we're going to the, Carroll County High School tomorrow for the back-to-school bash, and we'll be giving out supplies there. Gerald, Judy and I'll see if I think will be there. We are, we're trying to advertise. Our slogan is "Love where you live, keep Carroll clean." And I love that. We're, we're getting our name out there. We're getting out there to the community to let them know what we are doing. Also, I had a question for you. I had come before the board a few months ago and asked that you might put a large dumpster at the Cana site down there so that the residents there could dump stuff that is not bagged. Right now, everything has to be bagged, and it's like two dollars, three dollars a bag, depending on which day you go. Might be four, whatever, I'm hearing that from people in the county. But had you thought any more about putting a dumpster there so that we can take the trash that we can't put in a bag? Or had you forgotten that I asked?
We hadn't discussed that for, I don't know... Yeah, that, that would be something that would ever who's got the contract. You know, it's not a county issue, with, correct, Mike?
We currently have a provider that provides that service to the county, and the fee base is, you know, I don't know if they actually make any money at it, but it is providing a service to the Cana site. It's something we'd have to look at and probably communicate with them if there's a way. The problem is, you know, you can charge per bag, but you can't charge their couch, because you don't have a couch cost.
That's right. Well, if we just had a big dumpster, that's what, that's what we're asking about, one of those big bins that we could just, you know, dump our stuff in, and...
The hardest part is how would you, you charge? I'm just sitting on their side of the table, I'm thinking...
Maybe a truckload like the county dump does?
Is this for the litter task force that you're asking for? For this dumpster? Is it for the litter task forces?
This is as a Cana resident right now.
As a Cana resident.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just something that...
Go ahead and finish what you're, what you're saying, please.
Okay. Um, yeah, the thing of it is, if they could charge the same fee that they charge at the Hillsfield Dump, it would be fine, like eight dollars a load, nine dollars. I'm not sure, it's something like that, but it, it would be convenient for the, especially the elderly citizens in Cana, so that they didn't have to come up the mountain. Whoops. Can I have another minute?
Uh, we'll lay you one more minute, yes.
One minute?
Yes.
Okay. Well, once again, we just want to thank you for everything you've done. And also, I wanted to ask once again that if you would consider either a stipend or a mileage for those of us that do so much traveling on the litter task force, because there are about four of us that are constantly out doing work in the field. We are going to different events, we're going to sites, we're driving around the counties looking for the, the sites that need the most interest right now, that need the most work on. We're trying to identify those areas of the county, and we have people in different areas doing that. So I'd like to ask you to consider that, if, if not a stipend, a mileage, be okay? Because not all of our members travel, okay? Not all of them travel like about four or five of us do, I know, continually. So once again, thank you for your time and your support.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Janice.
Okay, next I have a Sandy Brant. Are they still here? Okay. Okay. All right. No one else has signed up, so next on agenda will be approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve either A and B separate, A and B together. Should be July first, twenty twenty-four, and July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Make a motion when you approve them both together, Mr. Chairman.
You have a motion, we approve both A and B together, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, start voting, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent counter.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Horton, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Second, okay. I'll start the voting with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is the invoices. We have A, B, and C. Entertain a motion, do them all together or separate?
I make a motion, we approve them all together, A, B, and C.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Brant, approve them all together, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins, start the voting with Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, on the new business received in your packet, the opioid settlement resolution, do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Early, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is the MOU for the Cana Fire. Entertain a motion to approve it?
Make that motion.
You have a motion, Mr. Collins, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, second. Start the voting, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on agenda is to ratify the utility easement for AEP, and this is for the county fair, correct? Okay. So do I have a motion that we ratify the utility easement for the AEP, the county fair?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Horton, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
We didn't have any discussion, I just have a question.
Yes.
Uh, is this a permanent easement or temporary, just when the fair?
Permanent. I think they're going to put a new pole in and provide service. I'm thinking lighting, does that sound right? Yes. They're going to put some lighting in for the fair.
Okay, yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. And next is the VDOT Support Route Fifty-Eight sketch that we received. I'll entertain a motion to approve it, or anyone has any questions?
I do. Can you tell me a little bit more about this? It looks like it's out around fifty-eight and six thirty-eight, is it?
What they're going to, what they're doing is going through and evaluating, uh, the existing, uh, right away through it. And there were a couple changes that were made to the original, but what this does is still allows access, but it would abandon, uh, some of the easements that go through there as far as, I think I have them, oh, I had a map in here, and I can pull it up.
Are they building road or just changing the status?
It's existing road. Do you have a copy of the maps?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Okay. If you go onto the drawings, it'll show you that the red is the segments of a new location and the, the ones that are being abandoned. So when you pull this up on the mapping, which is, this is not a very good depiction of it, but what they're doing is either correcting, I think on sheet two, it's just a correction, the blue line is on there, it will allow you, uh, be abandoned, which they'll still have the access on the other one. You know, you really need to overlay the, uh, the actual mapping for it. I went through all of them.
So it's actually three different intersections?
Yes, that's exactly right.
But they're not, there's no construction involved, it's just reclassifying roads that are already... are already there and abandoning some that they don't want in the system.
Right. So what will happen is, is a person might have, there might be a section of road that comes into one area and goes around like, give you some, the, the one that you've got here on sheet two. If you look at the area between A and F, instead of being access where you go and get back on 58 at A, they'll discontinue that section from A to F. And then they'll allow you to, you'll have access from B to G. It's just limited in some of the access that hit directly on the 58. So if they had two driveways going on the 58, now they have one. Instead of having two roads that go on and connect on it, it'll provide, and then the orange is where it's transferred to the second, the secondary system. It's just a way of allowing maintenance on them roads, on them small roads. It's when they built this, they're just cleaning up 58 project.
Yeah, well, the orange is the old 58 through the middle of Laurel IV.
Transferred to the second system. Now, that's, that would be, the orange would not be the abandoned.
No, I know. It's, yeah, okay. All right. Well, I'm just curious. It looked to me like maybe there's construction, but this has already been built. They're just changing.
That's correct.
Any more discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve it, or what's your pleasure?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion, Mr. Early. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is committee appointments. You might even wanna make a motion for any committee appointments. We have two.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate you, Joey Dixon, the solid waste authority.
Okay, have a nomination. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, start the voting. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I abstain.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Moore for District, District Three primary.
Okay, District Three. Do I have a second? I have a second. Okay, I'll start the voting with Mr. Moore.
I abstain.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And that brings us to old business, the erosion and sediment control ordinance that we had last month. We've had time to review it. I'll entertain a motion to approve it or not.
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion by Mr. Moore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second. I'll start the voting. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to board member comments. I will start with you, Mr. Horton.
Just wanna say thank you again to the staff, everything you guys are doing. Looks like our county is moving forward in the right direction. Really looking forward to the future. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, just like to thank the staff as well for everything they do, keeping everything going, keeping information to us. And just appreciate the other board members as well. All we got.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yeah, we, I've got a motion, a couple of motions or one motion that I'd like to make. We've talked about the pool and putting a pool in the county. We know the, the desire is there. I'd like to make a motion that we set aside $3.5 million or appropriate that money to move forward on the pool project.
Does your motion is appropriate $3.5 million for the pool?
Yes.
Okay, have a motion for, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, have a second on Mr. Horton. Any discussion?
I just wanna bring one thing up before it's voted on. When you go through the process of appropriating this funds, in order for us to move forward and spend the funding, it would bring it back at, I think we would bring it back at the next meeting for, we need to be able to tell where we're gonna take that money out of. If we use a beginning fund balance to pay for it, we do have beginning fund balance that is considered savings that this can be taken out of. So if, if it's possible to amend the motion to do that, that would make it easier as far as for us to begin moving forward with the project.
To amend the motion and take it from savings?
Well, take it from beginning fund balance.
Take it from beginning fund balance?
Yeah, I'll amend.
If it passes.
Okay.
I, I would amend my motion.
All right. Motion to amend and take it from beginning fund balance?
I do have a question too, Mr. Collins. Could we might amend it to what's not a total? And maybe have, maybe one of the board members and Mike and maybe Justin Crystal or somebody serve on something to make sure it's all what we wanna be rather than, you know, we're just taking, you know, we've got a rec director that presents, you know, to get eyes on things to, just like Joey had said there, you know, if you go through the engineering firm, that was a half a million dollars they threw in it, you know, maybe let them review it. Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem with that.
Do we need a number to move forward over that? That allows us to proceed?
If the board wanted to like to move forward, I'd recommend doing a do not exceed the $3.5 million and allow staff to review and give updates as we move forward.
That's good.
Okay, you wanna amend the motion again?
Sure. And I'm assuming just I have a question there. That's not to say that we couldn't come back and appropriate more if, if at the time we needed to.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I have, yes.
This is just to get the project moving. Okay, so the, the motion is $3.5 million to start the project from the beginning fund balance?
Not to exceed $3.5 million.
Not to exceed $3.5 million. Is that, is that correct? Is there anything else?
I think that's it.
I think that's it. Okay.
All right. I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Where, where are these funds coming from?
Beginning fund balance. This would come from the, the funds that you have in what you'd normally call savings. We call it beginning fund balance.
Do we have it?
Yes.
We do. How's it impact other capital improvement programs?
Oh, well, the, if you were to allot $3.5 million, we have in our capital improvement plan, $3 million for a EMS building. What would happen is, is as we go forward with that and build it, we'd end up having to take some type of debt in order to pay for that.
To pay for the EMS?
EMS building.
Where we could use savings to, to perhaps not have to take debt to build an EMS building?
Yes.
Any more questions?
Okay.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Is the EMS building in the CIP right now?
It's in the bill, it's in the, we have $3 million budgeted for it. But we don't know what the cost is gonna be until it's designed and bid out.
Well, we all know it's not gonna be $3 million.
We anticipate it's gonna be more.
Yeah, it's probably gonna be close to double that.
It'll be close, most likely. I'm hoping it's between $5 and $6 million, but yes, you're looking at around.
Double. Which, you know, if we're using $3 million savings to build a pool when we don't have money to build an EMS building.
The money's already appropriated $3 million for the EMS building.
But it's not enough. There's gonna have to be money come from somewhere.
It's been there for two and a half years.
But it's still not enough. It's gonna have to come from somewhere to make, to build a building.
Any more discussion? All right, I have a motion and I had a second. Mr. Horton, start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
No.
And I vote yes. Okay, Mr. Collins?
Oh, yeah. The, Mike's not in his chair, so I've got a question about the. My next request, Mike, is to talk to us a little bit about the VODI grant. I've had lots of calls and, and concerns from citizens because we didn't get the grant.
Okay. One thing while I was just clarifying, the, Mr. Durbin and I, I verified it with Justin. On this appropriation that we just did, we will have to have a public hearing at the next meeting in order to do it because it's over 1% of the annual budget. But on the VODI application, as you're aware, over the last several years, we've applied for VODI several times. This round of VODI, there's around $40 million that was put into the pot in order to do it. Our ask was too high. Okay? The reason why is, is as you've probably been aware, that the federal government gave to the state of Virginia approximately $1.2 million, $2 billion to spend on broadband in the state of Virginia. In order for them to spend this $1.2 billion, it has to go, they had to put a plan together. They sent it to the federal government. The federal government approves the plan and then they can start moving forward as far as distributing these funds. Okay? We were asking, and I'd had to pull the application up, $25, $35 million, okay, of $40 million. It was pretty much the understanding that our ask was higher, that it would better fit the BEAT program. So this fall, they should be having applications for the BEAT process and then it'll be approved probably about this time next year. Okay, it's just when the federal money went down, the pipeline, it's been coming down for the last two years, and they're just now getting to the point where they're spinning it. So I feel like with the higher ask that we was asking for, it's most likely it's gonna be funded through BEAT. Unfortunately, it puts us off another year. Now, we do, we do have some funding that we've been holding on for match, ARC money to provide some fiber in Pipers Gap. And there's still an outstanding application through citizens. Citizens applied for, it's a matter in which this board agreed to put some money beside in order to support that. That would be the eastern side of Carroll. It would run down 158, cover that side. And then there's a little bit dips into the upper part of, of the state as well.
So when will we know anything about those?
That, that application that citizens applied for, it was supposed to be done, I want to say around December, January, that area. It's a, the grant was pushed off because there are some questions on what is an allowable address. Okay, so there's a big, there's a big confusion on what is an allowable address to receive grant funding, whether or not it has service or not. So right now with the BEAT application, they're going through the challenge process, meaning that if, what they don't wanna do is fund a place that has service. But as you mighty, as a lot of you are aware, that there might say that they're servicing a provider there, but when you go on the ground and talk to them, they don't have any service at all. So they're trying to, they've looked at a dozen different ways of, as far as census blocks to locations to, to doing it. So the hardest part it's been over the last several years to determine how many addresses are actually served. So we've got about 10,000 to 12,000 ones that are not being serviced right now. So I'm saying 75, 80, 85% of the county is not being served. You know, it's very disappointing. I'd love to see broadband more than anyone, but VODI just has not fell into, into our needs. I mean, we need the funding, but it just hasn't matched the program. Just to give you an idea on the last applications, you know, you know, you get questioned on the grant and who's, we worked with Mount Rogers, PDC, that's received millions, millions of dollars worth of grants in order for broadband. We've worked through our local economic development agency and staff here. We've worked with different service providers. There's no good answer to it. It's other than, you know, our ask, you know, when we started asking for funding, it was such a large ask to ask for the funds. You know, possibly when they did the $180 million, $85 million prior to me, that would have been a, a good time to apply. And as time has went on, there's been less and less money put toward the VODI program.
So have we lowered our ask this time?
No.
No.
You, you're not gonna be, the problem with it is, is when we first started down this process, the first application we put in, we put in for a smaller section of the county to do a section with charter communication. We were, did not receive that grant because we didn't have the universal broadband in our plan. So then we did the entire county and then it became too big of an ask. So, you know, in order to do it, it's gonna, no matter who the provider is, it's gonna cost this much money. So I feel like you were gonna receive the money, but it's gonna have to go through the BEAT process.
I do have two questions on that. Is that money that's set aside in the CIP for the broadband is hit part of COVID money that has to be used by a certain time?
No, no. We, we have $2 million set aside for broadband. Some of that money is used for a match on another one, which we are leveraging those funds in order to try to receive money. But.
And I do have one more. Have they been in your district, any, with door hangers and flyer citizens?
No. Have they yours?
Yeah, I have.
Okay. And they're still present?
And I think they're still pursuing that community.
Yeah.
Grant.
Well, I hope they do.
That we have, yep.
I, I guess I'd follow that up, Mike, and you may not be able to answer this, but maybe if we could explore, in my community, where I live, we're well-served with, with internet service. I mean, we've got time for cable that comes up out of the Carolinas and gets us, but when it gets to the bridge at Interstate 77, there's nothing beyond that. See, I mean, I've always been told that it's, they can't, they can't go underneath the interstate with the cable.
We have that area in our plan as part of this funding. The company that we have chosen as provider is doing work in the North Carolina area, and they plan to come up through there and head up through Pipers Gap that direction.
Is that still a year out or is that something?
That would be a year out. Before you'd start, before you get the award. And then you're 18 months after that at a max. Usually these things take 18 months to do the build. So you're two and a half years to have it to all the locations approximately.
So basically, at this point, we're at least a year out from knowing anything different?
Close to it.
Yes, unless something falls from the sky. Two more things, actually. One, I would, Mr. Chairman and Mike, I'd like for us to discuss what we can do. The litter task force committee is doing a lot of great work and running to schools and collecting the, the things that they're having the students put in those bins. And I would like for us to discuss what we can do. They're very active. What we could do to help them out a little bit and all the travel that they're doing. So I'd like for us to put that on our scope. The other thing, Mike and I, you and I have talked about this, discovered this month that some of our tax tickets, county tax tickets list that certain properties have county water and sewer when they don't actually have county water and sewer.
That's correct.
I'd just like for us to figure out how to make sure that those tickets are correct because, I mean, I, I would assume that when they reassess, that the property is assessed based on whether or not they have access to water and sewer.
All I have to do is checking.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Early?
Thank you. A quick question for Mr. Watson. VODI this year was 40 million, last year was 50 million, and the year prior was 180 million.
I'd have to look at that last number. I don't know which year it was, but yes, there was one for around 100, I wanna say 185 million, 150 to 185, somewhere around that.
Well, I've been not nearly as involved as you have, but somewhat involved in this whole process for the past two years, two plus years. And I, my personal opinion is VODI is a failed and corrupt grant system. Last year, at the end of the, the grant awards, they gave 10 million of the 40 million of this year to somebody already. Did they not?
That's correct.
So I'm tired of dealing with VODI because it's, it's corrupt and it's not ever gonna work. Finally, uh, thanks to everybody for the fine work that you do every day, I appreciate it. And I just want to remind everyone that the County Fair is coming up on the, uh, twenty-first, I believe, that, is that correct, twenty-first?
Yes.
It's, continues to be a huge success, and I expect it to be that this year, so please let your neighbors know about it and come out and support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Early, Mr. Moore?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to thank our employees, and that was, um, just ditto Mr. Early's comments there on the fair. I know they'll, hopefully we'll have good weather, and a lot of people excited about it. And I know that fire committee have put a lot of work and effort into making it bigger and better this year, and, and, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, um, I'd like to thank everyone, everyone that came tonight and spoke, and, uh, Kurt and Gerald and, uh, everyone that came, appreciate it, appreciate all the, uh, the board, been good to work with, and, uh, appreciate that, appreciate your ideas and, uh, willingness to help the county. And, uh, just thank the staff and everyone for all you do, and that's all I have. Any administrator comments?
I have one item that is not on the, uh, board, but I just wanted to bring up. I had a communication with VDOT regard, regarding, uh, Panther Creek Road Bridge. Uh, I don't know if the board's aware, but there is a, uh, a bridge replacement on that bridge at Panther Creek Road, Jeezy Creek. Uh, it is planned, uh, uh, to start, and, um, uh, duration of the road will be approximately six months from March to September, uh, twenty twenty-five. So, in the spring, they're looking at closing that road in order to do the bridge. And they have a, uh, I have a map that has the, uh,
You just have to go out.
Detour plan.
Marshall's, so. It's in my district.
Dogspur area.
Ain't no county, there are citizens.
Any attorney comments, is all you have, Mr. Watson?
All got it.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Durbin. That being said, I, next on agenda, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes.